Okay.
I'm gonna start behaving professionally then, okay?
Oh, okay.
You're, you're good to go.
All right, I have, I do have six o'clock on one machine here. Okay, I am ready and I'm gonna call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order and I'd like you all to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States, America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much and welcome, everybody. I'm gonna begin with a moment of silence for the following. For Rachel Martineau, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. For Andrea Storms, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. For Dennis Dear, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Donna Naismann, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you very much. So today for BPT presentations, as you can see on your agenda, if you have one with you, we have Roxboro Road Middle School and Gillette Road Middle. And I believe we're gonna start with Roxboro Road. So whoever's taking it off for, taking it for Roxboro Road, you're welcome to begin as soon as you're ready.
Hi, everyone. I'm gonna share my screen and then we can get started. Thanks for having us tonight.
All right, well, I first like to start by just introducing myself. I'm Gretchen Belander. I'm the principal at Roxboro Road Middle School.
And I'm Ashley Carducci. I'm the Associate Principal at Roxboro Road Middle School.
And I'm Ryan Condon. I'm the BPT Chair as well as the Special Education Teacher in sixth grade.
So first, we'd just like to get started with, you know, the mission at Rox Middle is that we would ensure academic and social emotional growth for each child with a safe environment. We are really proud of the diversity of our school. We have a pretty transient population, so even as we pulled our enrollment today, we're up three more students. So we do kind of go up and down as far as our enrollment is concerned. We're, we're very happy that most of our students are hybrid learners. We do feel like when they're with us, then we have a much better opportunity to connect with them. This year, we are a school that is a targeted support and improvement school, and that's based on about forty-five percent of our students who are economically disadvantaged in their performance on our state assessments. But it's really important for us as a staff and a community to work together to help build our students.
And today, we just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge a really hardworking group of members for both our building planning team as well as our TSI committee. You'll see a lot of crossover there. But kind of interwoven throughout our presentation tonight, you will see us really mention these two groups a lot together as a lot of the importance that we're doing has really involved a large number of our staff that our president was really proud of.
One of the things we did look at was our ELA progress. Like Gretchen had said, we are on a targeted supportive improvement plan, so the TSI plan. Gretchen and Ashley met and decided to get a group of people together and we looked at our economically disadvantaged subgroup. And we're monitoring our students with disabilities as well as our multiracial subgroup as well. As you can see, there was a little bit of a drop in fifth grade in our ELA scores, but a big growth in sixth grade. And then we were paying attention to that seventh grade a little bit as well. Our goals, a lot of them revolved around our PLCs. So we're working on essential standards. We've been working on conformative assessments and looking at student performance and making changes and adjustments in our teaching as well. And then we're lucky enough to have weekly PLCs on Wednesday mornings where we can hone in on creating those standards in assessments and working together as a grid level, whether it's with our ELA or math group. And then the same thing with our math. We're still working with our TSI plan here with math and we're looking at a very similar downfall with our fifth grade, but as you can see, it goes up again in sixth grade. And that was a lot of work with our TSI plan to kind of hone in on that and see what we need to do to make some more progress there. And we are working on the Common Data Protocol, so we're all kind of looking at the same lens to make sure we're all on the same page and how we're going to assess the student performance and how they're academically gaining in many areas.
The next area is our attendance. So we actually pulled some data for the last four years. And if you can take a look at that, we hover right around twenty percent for our chronic absenteeism with our students who are economically disadvantaged between twenty-five and twenty-nine percent. And then I, I think this is probably gonna be a common theme or has been, but this year that has really, the trend is really that that's gone up. It's a dramatic increase for overall, but of course for economically disadvantaged students. So part of the goal is to, with our, our TSI plan, is to really focus on relationships and work on how we can get those disengaged students back in school and really working with our staff. We are, we have an attendance monitoring, monitoring committee that's working on getting some real positive strategies together. Even as, as big and small as making positive connections with our families and having positive messages to them about the importance of being in school.
And I think this goes without saying, but really, social and emotional learning and mental health have been at the forefront of our work this year. And it's, as you'll hear that kind of everywhere. But I think, you know, it's just something that we don't take lightly and we started off from day one, just really knowing that it's so important for our school to have that focus. We really are trying to model it ourselves with staff and support staff. It's so important to us. We continually are telling staff, we, you have to take care of yourself and you have to do this for yourself so that you can show up and do it for students. And so we've really, you know, put a focus on that. With our first few days coming back, we had focused trainings for staff around at the L work and just connecting with kids and that, and the importance of that relationship building piece. We provided staff with check-in forms, similar to what you'll see here. You know, if it was out of their comfort zone and the training happened so quickly, we gave them a whole plethora of resources to really be using with students and made it really clear that this is what's most important. We call that, you know, care over content with, with some of the phrases that we would hear throughout a lot of our staff work. And so, you know, we also continued that work before the holidays. We were really fortunate enough to bring in Monica Bayco from school-based, she's a school-based trainer through Anadaga Department of Child and Family Services. You know, and I think just anything that we can do to help support staff with this work. They're getting pulled in a lot of different directions this year, but this is really something that's so important to us that we know that. So in addition, students were able to take over morning announcements from Gretchen and I, which we were very happy to hear kids' voices in the morning. So the kids, you know, started a mindful moment that starts our day off and it comes straight from a student, which has been really great as well. And then I think just within our building, just having the leadership of staff members that know of the relationship and the work we're doing this year. So our positivity project leader and student council have been working in conjunction with everyone. We've already had a handful of spirit weeks. Really just trying to get everybody in, in the spirit of coming together, doing the best that we can, getting excited about those relationships, focusing on what's truly very important right now, which is that social and emotional learning and mental health of our students, staff, family, and everyone across the board.
We've had a lot of challenges and successes this year. A lot of our successes revolve around our teachers and staff. They really are working through all these different regulations that the state has put on us and we are taking it and we're going above and beyond, I think. I know Gretchen, Ashley and I have conversations all the time how we care too much sometimes and we want the best for our students. And I think it shows throughout our whole entire building. Another great thing that we do is our counseling staff and some of our TAs will go on Wednesdays and drop off food to the families and eat. They go out with their fan and they're gone for a couple hours and you can just tell that they enjoy it and the families are very appreciative of that. We've also done a holiday book giveaway in coordination with Book Fango and our librarian. We were able to go around to the classes and give away free books to the kids, which they thought was kind of a foreign thing these days because they can't really touch books and paper and everything, so it was nice for them to see that. We've had parent information sessions where Gretchen, Ashley and Danielle Barrett, our tech TA, had done like a Google Classroom 101 where the parents could ask questions and kind of get to know the background of Google Classroom and how to use it. And I think it was a great hit in that aspect. We also had appreciation boards for our custodial staff and cafeteria workers to just know that we appreciate them. Because sometimes I feel like they're working in the background and we just need to know that we're all here for each other and we're one big community there.
So as much as our school community is our biggest success, it also presents a challenge trying to stay connected with disengaged students. Not being able to just be together as a school because we know that being together is really what keeps us strong. So that is a challenge to just, to keep our families connected to us without our family nights and to keep our students connected. As much as it's a challenge having me as a new leader, hopefully it's a good challenge, but it is, takes some time to get established to, for me to learn the history of the school and to move forward in the direction we're headed. And also in the school community, just the ongoing changes, having to go remote for certain periods of time. And that could even be some changes in schedules. And so it's just trying to stay together and support each other through that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, just to echo much of what Gretchen said, and that's, that's our goal, is to stay together and support one another, to focus on those relationships. You know, responding to needs, I think our, our goal here is really, there's a lot of surveys, right, being put out, but what are you doing with that? What's our actual response? And a lot of that is where, you know, that's where we brainstormed the parent informational session and we're constantly meeting and, and how can we take all of that information and actually be responsive to it? And again, with the attendance committee, I think we're really trying to push ourselves right now, think outside of the box, right? We, we know that the letters and, and some things that we might be always doing or might not be working. So what can we do? How can we think outside of the box and how can we start coming together to really come up with those actionable items? That's really our goal and focus.
And then like we've talked about the whole time, we've had our TSI work and we've had a lot of successes with that. I was a part of the group and I gotta tell you, this was a very hardworking group. We worked, I think, for the past couple of months, every week for about two hours after school. A lot of us were working during school, one of our planning periods, before school, after school. And it was a lot of work, but I think our mindset was, this is for the kids. We need to make this school a better place and kind of remember them in hindsight. We were looking at the data from our different surveys we'd sent out, whether it was attendance or relationships or ELA math. And we got together and we set some goals and made some action plans and we were working on improving family, staff and student relationships as well as continuing the successes that we've had with that PLC growth.
So again, the, the successes also bring the challenges. So it was a, a good group that came up with a real comprehensive action plan. So right now, our challenge is implementing that with fidelity and really making sure that we, it's not just a piece of paper, but it's something that we're going to make a difference with for our students. So that implementation with the ongoing changes and challenges that this environment presents. And, and really, our big challenge in that is the master schedule. So we are lucky to be able to have the Wednesday PLC time. But we are looking forward at how we're gonna be able to maintain that important PLC collaborative time with staff next year, when hopefully things get back to normal and, and we're back at school five days a week.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're really anchoring to all of the hard work that a lot of our stakeholders, teachers did around our TSI plan and from the step because it's really meaningful work and based on all of the data and what our needs show is really there is a need for that PLC work to continue in our building. And to improve attendance. So, you know, there is, there's a lot of actionable steps and now that we're meeting the challenge of really implementing it and we couldn't be more proud of the hard work in the group as we continue to work and be really to make it come to fruition, to see that plan all the way through. And I think, interwoven throughout this presentation as well as the entire TSI work has really just been relationships. And so I think we're, we just have a strong movement towards building and understanding and application on restorative practice and what that can look like in our building and the importance that it can really do for us in a community like Roxboro. So with that, we wanna show you a really brief list that we put together because we know some of those relationships and pictures of the kiddos that we are referencing are what really are, are the best thing to see and hear from tonight.
Are there any questions? I'm not sure how to wrap that up.
Oh, I have comments, no questions. I, I just, I, your team, I love the layout of, of the presentation. I like the slide where you're telling me what the data means, your interpretation of it. I like the breakdown of successes, challenges and goals. It just was very flowing, flowed nicely when I looked at this yesterday. It was simple to understand, which I find helpful. So thank you. And I, I just loved that video. That music was awesome. Thank you.
You can't take credit.
Gretchen, it's Mr. Crabtree. I, I have a few questions and that'll let, let you off the hook. Food deliveries, amazing. Do you have any idea how many families you are delivering to?
It's right around thirty.
Thirty? Okay. Are these remote students or is it a mixture or?
It's, it's families in need that don't have transportation.
Okay.
You know, we've reached out to and have connection with that have asked and that we've offered to deliver to.
Okay, thank you. Do you see that the absentee, you know, you had a chart on absenteeism. Do you see that it's greater for the remote or is it greater with hybrid or is it about the same, the absenteeism?
I don't know if we've looked at it in that way.
Okay, okay. I just, just for me, I just wanted to know. And then what are the challenges of the remote teachers? What, what do they talk about that they have as challenges to the, to, to, you know, getting into the homes and, and, and teaching the kids remotely, the ones that are completely remote?
All of our teachers do both.
Oh, okay.
In-person and, and remote students synchronously.
Okay.
And I think, Ryan, you could speak to that more than us probably, but I think that the challenge is doing both of those things together.
Okay. Now, five, six and seven, which is unusual. Is it twice a week that they're coming in and then a hybrid day or a remote, then two days, for seventh grade also? Okay. And then I just have to say, it's not a challenge with your leadership. I know you gotta get to know the staff, but both you, I know Ashley quite well. I've worked with her. You got two strong people down there. Thank you for what you do. It's a needy middle school with, you know, and you're, you're, and, and as Paul says, you're going after everything that is needed. So thank you. And if that was Ryan, I can't remember if that was Ryan that was talking. Thank you for all your dedication with the teachers and, you know, improving your school because we want to continue improving. So welcome aboard, Gretchen.
Thank you.
We'll see you again next year.
That's right.
Lost my screen for a second. I must have touched something. Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any. So thank you very much, Roxboro Road. And next we have Gillette Road Middle School. They're BPT. When you are ready, you may begin. Thank you.
Sorry. Oh, yeah. Sorry, guys. All right, I am going to share again. So this is Dave Cordo and I'm the principal at Gillette Road Middle School and it's my pleasure this evening to accompany members of our BPT to present to the Board of Education. And I'm gonna let them introduce themselves quickly.
Dave, it's not sharing.
Is it? Oh, my gosh. Thought it was.
You, you want me to share mine?
Yeah, go ahead. My laptop is not connecting this evening, so I am actually working on my desktop at home. Thanks, Sean. All right, so now we'll let the members of the BPT introduce themselves.
I'm Sean Ackley. I'm the Associate Principal at Gillette Road Middle School.
I am Deanna Aldridge. I'm the co-chair at the middle school.
I'm Steve Bacon. I'm also co-chair at Gillette Road.
I'm Erica Gilbert, IAS math teacher and BPT member.
There we go. Thanks, Sean. So our first slide is just to give you some, if you can back it up, Sean. There we go, is to give you the demographics of the building. And as you can see, our enrollment, we can't share that that enrollment has been dropping gradually over time. Looking specifically to this year, probably like you've observed in, you know, the other presentations that you've seen from BPTs, our ratio is pretty consistent in terms of the students who are in our hybrid model versus those in remotes. We do have a little bit of movement back and forth. Depending, it seems to coincide with the recording of any students testing positive. You know, it obviously heightens folks' concern. And so some folks move from hybrid then to remotes, but we also have families that are discovering how important it is for kids to actually be physically in school. And so those families, we are there, we do have families that are likewise moving their students from the remotes, the remote learning option to the hybrid option. And we've allowed for that. Our school is not a Title I school, as you can see on our free reduced lunch statistic. We do have two fifteen one one classrooms at Gillette Road Middle School, which are learning with us all five days of course of the school week this year. And we also, for the first year, have a significantly higher number of students who are English language learners. Next slide.
All right, so this is our testing data for fifth grade. We looked at the fall data of the math inventory and the reading inventory due to the lack of spring data because of the COVID closure. And these graphs are comparing our fall scores for two thousand eighteen nineteen, two thousand nineteen twenty and two thousand twenty twenty-one. For our fifth grade math inventory, fifty-one percent of our students scored in the below basic range as compared to thirty-three percent in two thousand nineteen and thirty-nine percent in two thousand eighteen. And for our reading inventory at the fifth grade, twenty-one percent scored in the below basic range as compared to twenty-five percent in two thousand nineteen and twenty-two percent in two thousand eighteen. Our sixth grade data shows that forty-seven percent of our students fell in the below basic range compared to forty-eight percent in two thousand nineteen and thirty-three percent in two thousand eighteen. And for our reading inventory, fifteen percent of our students fell in the below basic range as compared to thirteen percent in two thousand nineteen and twenty-two percent in two thousand eighteen. And for our seventh grade data, thirty-seven percent scored in the below basic range on the math inventory as opposed to forty-three percent in two thousand nineteen and forty-two percent in two thousand eighteen. And on our reading inventory, fifteen percent scored in the below basic range as compared to nineteen percent in two thousand nineteen and twenty-two percent in two thousand eighteen. All of our numbers, with the exception of the fifth grade math inventory, are pretty consistent with where they've been over the last couple of years. But I did wanna take a minute to note that our students this year did take both the math inventory and the reading inventory from home in most cases. And years prior, students have always taken the assessments in the classroom setting. And that we also had an increase in our number of students who did not complete fall assessments. Approximately eight percent of our students this school year did not complete the math inventory as opposed to only four percent in two thousand nineteen and approximately five percent did not complete the reading inventory in two thousand twenty as opposed to two percent in two thousand nineteen.
So looking at the, that data that Erica just talked about, we're looking at some of the data trends with the R and MI she's looking at. We'll be looking at the attendance information on the next slide as well, showing how that has changed over the course of the last year. And one of the biggest, biggest data trends that we don't have for the last year is the nineteen twenty New York State ELA and math tests were canceled due to COVID nineteen. So we're coming up with some of the building goals this year. We looked at where we're gonna be in the hybrid, hybrid model and with kids as remote. So the goals kind of work around communication with everybody. So we want to increase our parent and community communication involvement through the teachers emailing, the administration, sending out information to the parents and the people in the community. We wanted to build those relationships with the staff and students because it was definitely a different year without having all the students in the classrooms. Our classrooms average anywhere between mostly eight and twelve students in a classroom on a Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday. And then you're, you're building the relationships with those remote students online. So it was a definitely a different year for our teachers. We're looking at using the increased We're looking at using the increase in the use of the multi-tiered system of support. Especially this year, we'll get more into that as later on in the presentation. But just making sure that everybody has the support they need, both academically and for their mental health. And one of the big things this year, especially with the, the issue of the COVID would be to collaborate and analyze the student data that we've had in the past and comparing it to the data we're getting this year and creating the common assessments that is a district-wide initiative to get everybody kind of talking about the same thing from building to building. That students are on the right track. One of the biggest data trends that we've noticed this year is our student attendance. If you look at the overall attendance from 2018, 2019, we're at 96%. 2019, 2020, we're at about 97% attendance. And then we dropped to 88% for the school year to, to date. So there's a big drop off, drop off for Gillette Road. And one of the glaring things here would be the chronic absenteeism for Gillette Road. And three years ago, in 2018, 19, we were only at 8%. And this year in the model, we're, and right now, we're sitting at approximately 31% of the students with chronic absenteeism. And that, I will say is by no fault of the teachers or anybody, we're, we're trying. It's just, it's, it's tough to get to some students in this, this setting.
So with social emotional learning, I, I'm going to start and then Erica, you can just add on or you'd like. One of the things that I, that is important to note is that we spend, as appropriately so, a focus is our students at risk. And those are the kids that are in this environment disengaged from school. Every week, our Student at Risk Committee meets. That committee consists of all of our counselors, both administrators, our school resource officer, one of our school nurses. So we kind of have that connection to anything that might be happening medically speaking. And they sometimes work with students who the counselors are unaware of and vice versa. So that's, it's good that we're all on the same page. Our, our purpose for reviewing students once they're added to that list. Oh, and the other, one of the other individuals is our Liberty Resources Counselor as well joins us. Don't want to leave her out. And so that time is, you know, well spent. We spend roughly 90 minutes to two hours every Wednesday reviewing any students for updates. And brainstorming any ideas that we can for keeping them engaged and connected. But that, that's significant, more significant this year than the work of that committee than, or that team, right, I should say rather, than it has been in years past. Some of the other things that we wanted to highlight are that our PE staff in particular have done a great job incorporating mental health education into the curriculum on a weekly basis for all students. And again, it's a consistent effort on the part of our counselors to keep those students, all students connected. And Erica, did you want to speak to the mentor, the mentoring program?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Unfortunately, we've decided to put that program on hold for the school year due to some of the restrictions that are in place in relation to COVID. It's been a little bit more challenging to implement than anticipated. However, we were awarded a grant from the North Syracuse Education Foundation. And the money that we have received from that are going to help us provide resources for the program. So that as we move forward, we can continue working with those students once we are able to do so.
So to find ways to build on the relationships that we mentioned earlier in the presentation. We're trying to find ways to celebrate during this very difficult time. So one of the ways we found to connect both with students and with families was we developed this fall monthly materials pickup. On Wednesdays, families could come and we let them know beforehand they could come to the school. And they could pick up materials if their students were remote all the time, didn't get a chance to get the same kind of physical materials that the students were using here. It was a great time for us to connect with families, kind of see them face to face. And also have the students an opportunity to, once again, face to face, if possible, to meet with their students. To continue on with that, we wanted to make sure that the students also had as much, much success as they could. So in addition to having them come in, which they can come now and pick materials up from the front. We also have been going to their houses to make sure that they get the materials too. So we've either dropped things off at their houses in the event that they can't come here to the school. Or if there's some things that they have to get back to the school, once again, they've had difficulty. Due to a number of factors, we have actually gone to houses to collect materials from them, continue to make that relationship strong. We want to make sure that this is just not academics. It's just, we understand school is an important part of it. But there's so many celebrations in their life that they want to do. The PTG's been great this year. Typically, they do some programs for the students, parties and so forth, which we've been unable to do. But in the fall, they were able to contact Glazed and Confused Donuts. And they had a donut truck come to our school one day and the students were able to come, actually two days for the two different cohorts. And the remote students could come and pick up their, their donuts if they wanted to. And they came to the school, got some donuts, got some cider, had some juice or whatever. And it just kind of broke up what's been a very difficult year for us so far. Fall sports have been able to continue on. Our STEM program, we do an after-school, had done an after-school program last year for science and technology. That unfortunately had been stopped to a certain extent, but we're able to do one of our competitions, which was the Bridges competition that we did down at the Most this fall. And actually, we had two teams that one was best design and one came in fourth place. Very happy about that. Continue to connect with the community through our different things like pages, pajamrama, we've done the food drives, Christmas giving, school spirit weeks. Overall, we're just trying to keep this as positive as possible. We understand that having to connect digitally, both for staff and students is hard. But it gives us an opportunity to do something we haven't done in the past. And really, it's developed a humility for us. We tell our students, you know, we're struggling too. We're trying to learn new things. We're trying to figure out the technology. We're trying to understand how to make education better for you. And I think that's, that's kind of brought us down a little bit to more of an educational student level. So that's an exciting time for us.
I, I just want to add to what Mr. Bacon said, and thanks for encapsulating all of that. We do, we did our PTG. Actually, their support of all students has been known this, this year in evidence. They actually had a donut truck on Wednesdays for our remote-only kids to participate. And we, so we've, we've approached all of these celebrations with every student in mind. Because even those who are learning remotely, we want to make sure that they feel connected to our school and our community so that they don't feel forgotten.
So we've obviously been faced with many challenges this year. And so when we sat down to brainstorm some of the bigger challenges. Mr. Bacon and I were kind of just, you know, rambling off a bunch of challenges that we were facing. And so we decided to come up with this wordle. And it just kind of scrambled around all of the challenges that not only the teachers, but the students are facing as well. The biggest one, obviously, being surrounded by the pandemic of COVID-19. But one of the positives that is coming out of the challenges that both teachers and students have been facing. We just recently, last Thursday, have been able to allow the students to move classrooms. From September through last Thursday, they were sitting in the same class, in the same chair for the seven hours that they were in school. And it was very, very difficult for the students. So we literally just got word that MNO has taught us how to sanitize. The teachers have agreed to go through and clean all the desks and chairs. So the students are actually able to be a little somewhat mobile during the day and move from classroom to classroom instead of having the teachers move into their classrooms. But we do, definitely do still face some challenges. We have physical education teachers trying to teach phys ed being 12 feet apart, which can be very difficult. They can't really have any contact or share equipment. So that's been a huge challenge. Speech teachers, OT, PT, all of the special services. A lot of these teachers are trying to conduct their services remotely, which has been a huge challenge. Technology in and of itself for both teachers and students have definitely, has definitely give us, given us all a run for our money each day. And then just adjusting to having a cohort one Monday, Tuesday group and having a cohort two Thursday, Friday group. Getting to know the remote-only students has been a big challenge for teachers. Because the only interaction we have with them is through, through the internet, through Zoom, through Google Meet. So that, that's definitely been a big challenge. And then our fantastic, amazing library has been closed. Students have, have been able to borrow books, but they haven't been able to actually go into the library, peruse the books, tech, check out what they wanted. They've had to do a lot of that either through their ELA teachers or through an online setup that the library has for the kids. But we don't have a fancy video to end our presentation with, unfortunately. But those are just some of the challenges that we are facing. But we are overcoming them. We were, I feel that all the teachers and the students especially have done a fantastic job. In fact, Mr. Leahy was in our building the other day and I told him that I commend our students. The students deserve some sort of an award because they have been amazing and just not what I would have expected from some of the students. And I, they definitely, they definitely have done their job this year. So I, I give them medals. So unfortunately, we don't have a video there.
These are the members of the Gillette Road Building Planning Team. And we are ready to take any questions you might have.
Well, I just have a comment. No need. You don't have to apologize for not having a fancy video. That was just fine. I did have one question and I should know this because I think the number's been given me, to me before. But with, with regards to chronic absenteeism, what, what is the number we look at that triggers that or jumps it up to be considered a chronic absenteeism issue?
I believe it's an, it's an excess of 10%.
Okay.
At any given point in the school year. So that's kind of a moving target. Our challenge, just to elaborate on the data you saw, is that the students, when they're remote, early on, they were, they seemed to have difficulty logging in to get marked as present. And then what we find, Mr. Ackley and myself, is if we get calls from parents to correct the attendance. We find that the student, in fact, was engaged, did do their work, their grades are showing in school tools. So there's no way that they couldn't have been present. So we're, we're hoping that that data will get cleaned up and we'll, we'll be able to confirm its accuracy.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, awesome. All right, well, thank you, Gillette Road. We will move on now.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're due for an update on the KWS Bear Road renovation. So I believe that's probably Mr. Irwin and whoever may be with him on that. Okay.
Well, thank you, Paul. I have Todd LaBarre and Bob Buffio will watchdog start us off. And.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us tonight. Bob, I don't know, for those of you that don't know, Bob is our onsite field superintendent who's closest to the actual construction that happens daily there. He's going to run through some of the progress that's been made and then I'll follow up with our status in terms of the contracts and contractors' performance, so.
So basically, the work in progress is the window installation. That'll be ongoing for probably two to three weeks. Hanging the sheet rock in the first and second grade classrooms. That's probably 90% complete. So we're way ahead of schedule in that area. Joint compound process in the first and second grade wings, along with the kindergarten wings, is almost complete. The exterior range screen system is being installed. They're about as far as they can go until the windows are completely installed. Again, with a two-week outlook, they should be, towards the end of the two weeks, they'll be done, or starting painting in the kindergarten wing. The exterior windows, we will air, air and water test on towards the end of this week. And I'm thinking two weeks probably after that, all the windows will be installed. Exterior windows. Then shortly after the windows are installed, exterior siding system will go on. Here's some pictures of, so the first top left-hand corner would be a kindergarten wing classroom. On the south side, which I believe is room 117, 119, and 121. The one right underneath it, it would be the north classrooms, kindergarten wing, looking out towards the windows. Top right-hand corner would be the crawl space. That's ongoing with all the mechanicals and everything else being installed. And then the bottom right-hand corner would be just the exterior wall of what's actually going to be behind the sheet rock and everything. So here's some pictures of the exterior. Again, that's about as far as they can go until all the windows are installed. The siding will go on within days of, after that, the windows are installed. So all the way to the right is actually a window installed. Doesn't have the trim on it yet, but gives you an idea of a typical window. Bottom left-hand corners would be the interior version of the window, wood, wood interiors. The, so the window pane all the way to the left would be the egress window. The one smaller one in the middle, you can open up for ventilation, opens up into the room and tilts in too, from the top. So has two functions there.
So currently, if you look at the, the screen we have here, the general contractor is about 30% complete with overall contract work. The other contractors, if you do the math like I did, they fluctuate a little bit. And some of that has to do with our, our mechanical contractor isn't billing aggressively. Our electrical contractor has a, a good majority of the material stored onsite. And they're allowed to bill for stored materials. So that's why that looks a little bit more than 30% complete. Plumbing's about on target and the same for the roofing contractor. They have a, a bunch of materials stored at the site, ready for installation when the weather changes. I don't know. I can't remember. There's another slide after this one. But all in all, the, the contractors are performing well. They're following the schedule we put together. They're working as a team. And we're making good progress as we go. I don't know if you guys remember, but we broke the building up into different phases. And there's some distinct milestone dates with turnovers that we're trying to hit. And so far, everybody's working on track with regards to hitting those target dates. There's been great cooperation amongst all. The team that we have on this project is much like Smith Road was and King and King, Watchdog in the District. We've all been working well together and have been able to handle all of the unforeseen conditions and changes that come along the way based on typical construction, so.
All right. Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Bob. If the board has any questions about the current status of construction, probably a good time to pop in with any of those. Okay. Just a refresher. We had talked about, a couple months ago, about the potential changes to the bus loop and the, the walk path around the property. We would like to move forward with this. So I will be sharing with the board the, the change order for this. So finalize that. But just as a refresher for everybody, we just wanted to throw a graphic up here and bring it to your attention. I have Paul Johnson here. He's going to share with us a little bit about what some of the design intentions were on the project. How we're making sure that we meet some of those goals. And he's going to give a little bit of a preview of what's to come.
Great, thanks, Matt. Good evening, everyone. As a refresher, we did want to go over some of the design intentions. And these are really the goals established by the district at the beginning of the project, long before we ever started any, any of it. uh, ever started uh, any, uh, any of the, excuse me, any of the design. So um, some of those are uh, first and foremost, really is flexible and adaptable spaces. Just thinking back, this building was uh, more than 60 years old uh, with, with little to no renovations. And so really, um, a, a big thing was how do we future proof the building the best that we can uh, to allow uh, future generations of teachers and students to operate in this building um, in, in whatever they deem the best mode. Uh, while also creating flexible spaces for today and, and the variety of ways and, and educational modes that um, the current staff would like to use the building. Uh, a, a, another big thing was to really open up the courtyard and to provide a lot of educational spaces outside of the typical classroom. Again, a building where we could not justify large additions, either through enrollment or just financially. And so how do we use the square footage in the building uh, to, to the, the best advantage possible? So one of those things was to um, to start to use the, the um, the corridor, uh, still maintaining safety, safe passageways and alls. But how do you begin to create some of those group areas and, and uh, project spaces outside of the classroom? Both allowing everyone to spread out a little more, but also um, just uh, with that spreading out, allowing groups to uh, more small groups to work and not be so crowded and to have conversations, sort of people talking over top of each other. So that was a big thing we heard from teachers right from the start. And it's something we observed the first time we were through the building. There are often chairs and tables pulled out in the hallways and just um, trying to find that extra space. Um, the next thing, uh, very similar, the next two, uh, pretty similar to Smith Road. Um, again, looking for a high quality indoor environment. Uh, and particularly at Bear Road, there were requests from the beginning from staff for a warm and inviting area or warm inviting building, um, that very academically engaging and exciting for students. And so um, throughout, we used um, color, natural materials, so wood. Bob already talked about the wood windows, um, and other materials that really um, would, would be comforting and, and to sort of break down the traditional school feel. In, in addition, a very important thing is, is acoustics. And again, I've talked in the past about our mechanical systems, uh, and all the steps taken um, to provide a, a very quiet academic environment. And again, uh, air quality and low emitting materials and natural way, all very key pieces in, in uh, that environment. And finally, uh, the net zero energy ready building, meaning um, a building that uh, with the addition of some solar panels on the roof, uh, could literally produce the amount of energy that's required to run it. Um, so that's achieved through a super insulated uh, building envelope. Um, that's the foundation, walls, roofs, windows, the entire envelope. Um, what that did, uh, this was really key when we talked about downsizing the basement areas and, and containing all the mechanical equipment in the crawl spaces. That super insulated uh, envelope allowed us to downsize all the mechanical equipment. So it actually fit in those um, crawl spaces, which um, you know, even though Bob showed a picture, you can walk or shorter people like myself can walk around in those crawl spaces without hitting your head. But still, um, it is a crawl space, not a full basement. So we're talking about all the mechanical equipment for the building fits down there. Like, another key to that is the equipment's not on the roof, uh, which means it will last longer. And uh, a key benefit to all this is not just so that you can claim that you have a net zero energy building, but because it provides you with uh, lower maintenance, lower energy costs and um, all that through much less energy consumption. So um, like a key, um, key thing that we, we uh, wanted to do on this building related to the net zero energy was to do some additional commissioning and testing to ensure that the district is getting what um, the drawings and specific specifications require. So um, this is a, another layer of testing and site observation in addition to the great job that um, Watchdog is doing. Um, and they're really looking at the detailing of uh, the, the windows, the air barrier, everything that, that makes a tight air and water envelope. Um, this includes some additional testing. You see two pictures here. They essentially form a temporary chamber. And they're testing the wall system. They'll also do this to the windows and the, the door, uh, the curtain wall systems. And they're literally testing to see uh, how much air uh, can or can't pass through that. So again, just making sure that the um, the district will get the energy performance that uh, was purchased on bid day, that it's watertight. Um, and uh, crucial for students sitting around windows and near the exterior wall. We don't want drafts. So again, that comfort piece. So uh, switching gears, uh, we wanted to give you an update on uh, some design modifications requested by the district during construction. And we're excited that we're able to um, with, with a great group of contractors and Watchdog able to really explore these ideas quickly and uh, be able to proceed with them. A big one was uh, removing carpet from the classrooms. That was just something that the district wanted to rethink. Um, just thinking about young kids uh, and carpet and stains, um, accidents, et cetera. So uh, removing the carpet and instead using a resilient flooring, um, LVT. I, I look forward to when we can tour portions of this building and, and we can actually point to some of the materials. So that you have a, a, a better uh, view of what they are. Um, but again, LVT, it's a, it's a quality, high quality resilient flooring. Uh, we also at that time took the opportunity to rethink what was being done in the hallways. And we extended that same LVT flooring throughout the corridors instead of the resinous poured floor. Uh, what this allowed us to do was to um, one, have, have a more continuous flooring and, and just less products to maintain. Um, it's actually a cheaper flooring than the resinous floor. And it also allowed us to bring in some more color in the hallways. And so you can see some of the images there are just us exploring how to use the different color uh, tiles within the flooring and to help again, um, identify and differentiate the project work areas from the main parts of the hallway. And then all the way to your right is a typical classroom layout that, again, that blue band around two sides really identifies the, the wet area, the work area where the sink is. And then the, the area where all the cubbies are and the storage. Uh, another item we're in the middle of is removing the stage at the cafeteria. And that will allow additional uh, group or breakout areas, uh, additional cafeteria floor space when needed. And some uh, much needed storage for equipment such as uh, ban risers or other things that could be stored in there. And then finally, a small item, just providing um, some additional uh, uh, access between kindergarten rooms. So teachers can provide some additional coverage back and forth between the kindergarten. If you remember kindergarten is the one um, space where originally the thought was they're, they're pretty, they're pretty um, isolated um, rooms, one from the next. So again, this opens that up a little bit more. So that they can work together more now or in the future. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, just so, some warm colors and engaging um, designs um, that we hope um, students and staff alike find uh, exciting and interesting. And, and they're excited to be in the building. There's two images on the left, uh, just some tools that we use while designing the cath, or excuse me, designing the library. Um, it shows sort of the theme in there of uh, a nature theme. So we have the cave area, we have green space, we have water, um, just using the, the materials that uh, we already needed to use in that space. And, and through those, helping to differentiate the classroom areas, the reading areas, uh, and then the book storage areas. And then uh, the photo on the other side is, is just again, a snapshot of the many materials going into the building. And, and um, basically those are the, the, um, all the colorful ones. Again, they're used strategically throughout, um, and the goal is a, a very light, airy and um, fun space.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Um, any questions from the board for Paul? All right. Bring up a new share here. And Mr. Bowles is going to uh, kick us off on a conversation about long range facilities planning.
Thank you, Matt. Um, first, we've done a long range plan many, many years ago. And uh, it's, it's time for us to uh, look towards the future, being that we've renovated many of our buildings. But I want to uh, bring you to the next slide where the best way to plan your future is to start to create it.
I got, I messed up our share here.
Okay.
It doesn't want to reset.
Okay. So what we've been doing is we've been looking at um, oh, every so often, we have to do what they call is a building condition survey. And uh, last time we did that, I believe was uh, thank you, uh, was 2006, but the district wants to uh, refocus its facilities and planning efforts to suit the programs and uh, building a brighter future. The goal is to create a master plan, uh, kind of look in depth at how our buildings will support the learning. Uh, some of the things that we've been doing is looking at the current spaces that we have and creating new spaces and utilizing available space. I think you heard about the courtyard at, at Bear Road. We've looked at other buildings uh, in the district and outside the district of how they've utilized uh, some of the available space to meet the needs of their, their programs. For an example, uh, a district that we've looked at recently uh, also has a, a drone technology class. So what they've done is they've utilized the flexible space right in the courtyard to help with that class of flying their drones uh, within the courtyard, uh, looking at that flexible space. Um, our educational programs should drive the facility's decision. So um, uh, that was an example of looking at uh, what our programs are and then creating our facilities to, to work with what we're looking at long range. Go to the next slide, Matt. So uh, as a district, we have created plans and developed projects many times. What has changed and why now? Um, again, our last uh, comprehensive facilities plan was done in 2006. I think you guys remember it was a big thing that Dr. Melvin had worked on. Uh, we were looking at grade configuration um, at one point because we had uh, numbers that were uh, increasing at the time. And we were trying to see how to best move students based on grade level. Uh, the big consideration was getting uh, potentially getting ninth grade at the high schools to have a nine through 12 configuration. So there was no consensus, but a lot of different possibilities were considered regarding middle schools and uh, different things that we can do to uh, change our configuration because we still currently have four transitions uh, in our system. But we have more capacity right now and we have, so that's going to give us more options as far as what we can do when we're looking at a long range plan. Our educational models and programs continue to evolve. Uh, vision 2020 has run its course, so uh, it's time to look at and refresh some of the educational goals and ideas. Talks about we struggled to meet the milestones set by the previous plan. Um, some economic factors set us back a little bit with the Bear Road construction and we fell behind a little bit. Um, but one of the things that we're looking at is we've uh, in the past, focused on one building at a time. And in that process, other things have been neglected across the district. And by developing a different strategy with the master plan, looking at meeting the needs across the district in smaller amounts so that you don't go uh, like Bear Road and go almost like 60 years before a major renovation uh, happens. So we have a large and aging portfolio which needs regular attention. Um, there are things uh, along the way, whether it be entrance sidewalks, um, heating and cooling systems. Uh, public education and needs of our community are evolving and our facilities continue, must adapt to these changes. As you know, because we put this in the Friday letter each week, our enrollment has continued to decline, which provides us with new opportunities. Basically, how we can look at things and reconfigure. Um, if uh, Mr. Marizio is here, uh, he had uh, one that mentioned that to me earlier in the school year. Uh, when are we going to be looking at uh, facilities plan? Because we did that uh, many years ago. Um, economic challenges continue to, to make its way. And I think we'll always have certain economic challenges. But uh, it's one of those things that if you build a master plan, uh, you can look to possibly uh, work around those challenges as they continue to uh, evolve. Uh, we need to leverage every available financial tool. Um, uh, more recently, we were talking at legislative committee, talking to our legislators, talking, finding out about grants and identify things so that we can construct a financial plan to support the needs we identify. Our community has new members and we want to hear from them. We want to get as many people involved in the process so that we can have uh, ample discussion so that we hear the voices of many.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Um, as we look forward, um, and we begin to plan for the future, uh, the whole administrative team is really looking forward to an engaging and transparent process like Dan has shared. Um, we want an informed process, shared, uh, you know, that's really built on a shared educational vision. It needs to be data driven and, and as Dan shared, it needs to be a community effort. Um, what we're looking for here is not a project. We're really looking for is a, a guide um, to inform our future decisions and to reference as we design and, and prioritize projects and needs throughout the district. Um, and you know, leveraging these grants and aid are, are something we're going to continue to talk about as we move forward. Go to the next one. There we go. Um, I'm going to introduce here Kirk Narbaugh with uh, King and King and Paul Johnson.
Hello, everyone. Been a little while since I've seen you all, but um, you know, this uh, this effort is uh, you know, pretty exciting uh, for everybody. Uh, and as Dan pointed out, uh, it was a three year effort back in 2006, seven and eight where we started with a demographic study that Dr. Paul Saversky helped the district out with. And, and the reason for that demographic study was we had a completely different scenario in that we were trying to figure out how to handle this growth in the district and when, when was it going to level off? And so just to put things in perspective, back in 2008, when we wrapped up the last long range master plan, you know, the focus was completely on capacities and overcapacity of almost every building in the district. And we had reached our peak in the district of about a little over 10,000 students in the K-12 population back in 2008. And what we're looking at now is a reduction of that number um, in the range of 25% to about 7,500 students uh, by the end of this uh, sequence of master planning and, you know, 24, 25. So um, as Dan pointed out, a completely different scenario in terms of how we would approach this because we have the flexibility to manage um, even the discussion about grade configurations with, which before was uh, you know, a very difficult task, um, even just to move ninth grade to the high school. Because to do that, we had to put an addition on the high school that was about the third of the size of the existing building. So everything had significant cost implications. So you know, we get to kind of wipe the slate clean. Um, and um, we're going to talk a little bit more in detail about the facility side of it. But this will probably be the only time you hear an architect say that it's not about projects and it's not about buildings, because it's not. It's about the educational plan. It's about the mission and vision of the district. Uh, and um, as Dan pointed out, getting the community involved like we did back in 2008, where we had um, a committee of about 20 to 30 people that was a cross section of parents and teachers, students, um, that represented all of the different building levels uh, and buildings themselves that can help a kind of guide this discussion. Because it's really a visioning session about what could be. And then ultimately, what we want to sort out is the options as to where we may, where, where we may go with it. So the process itself, if you want to go to the next slide, they're done. You know, it starts with the process and the setting of the strategic vision, which is fully on the district. And it's, it's uh, what the board and leadership does and what you've already done with your 2020 vision. Um, the next step in that process is going to be to establish the needs. That's where the committee is going to come into, really flush out all of these data points. And then um, really start to zone in on, you know, how this all ties together. And then ultimately, And then ultimately, what comes out of that is, you know, what kind of the direction of the district is going to be, which is then going to drive the space needs and the programming. That middle section, you know, we're going to establish the plan and the planning parameters. That's where we come in and we start to guide that, facilitate the discussion. Then we get into the documentation piece, which ultimately is going to lead to somewhere down the road, some discussion about projects and how the architecture and the designs can support that educational philosophy and that overall vision for the district. So that's really kind of the flow diagram for how we operate. But it's a group effort, and it's really something that's led by the district. And we're there to support it and to provide input and guidance where we can, help facilitate where we can. But it's really something that's directed from your side of the table.
Great. Thanks, Kirk. As part of that, one piece of that entire process is really surveying what you own at the moment and getting sort of a baseline of where your buildings are as far as trouble areas and what's ending, what's reaching its end of useful life, et cetera. So New York State has a requirement called the Building Condition Survey Process, which I'm sure you've heard of, the BCS for short. It is sort of that process to survey all the buildings and review building components. Our team is comprised of engineers, structural engineers where needed, landscape architects, architects, and obviously mechanical, electrical, plumbing folks. So we've been going through all your buildings this past year. We've completed the tour portion of that, the investigation portion. We've spent a bunch of time interviewing your staff, your maintenance staff, and they've been incredibly helpful just pointing out what we could never possibly see during a walkthrough. And so they really know the nuts and bolts and what's functioning and not functioning. So we've completed that, and we're in the process of compiling the data now. And then ultimately, that all is uploaded to SED by the beginning of March. So the important stuff that's coming out of that, I can start to give you some general overviews and trends that we're seeing and some of the initial findings as just a starting point. So some of the trends, obviously, a large portion of your building stock is 40 to 60 years old. You then have another group of buildings that were renovated in the, particularly in the '90s and into the early 2000s, buildings like Roxborough, Middle, Roxboro Al and Gillette being the sort of the latest in that group. And then you have the most recent being Smith Road, Bear Road, and Transportation Building. So when I say in that bullet point, most recent work is approaching 20 to 30 years old. That's putting Bear and Smith aside. The reason I point that out is a lot of equipment, mechanical equipment, roofing, windows, a lot of these components have a similar lifespan to 20 to 30 years. So just pointing out that even in what might feel like fairly new or recent renovations within the district are reaching a stage where additional attention is required. Again, there in the last, say, 10 to 15 years, there have been less projects, and there are a lot of factors to that, and it's all understandable. But again, it creates a significant need nearly district-wide. And so here's just a quick list identifying a few of those larger items. I hate to just focus on what needs work. There are plenty of things within the district working well. But again, the point of this process is to identify the areas in need. What did come to light, probably not surprisingly, is there's extensive need required at Lake Shore, which is, I think, the last elementary within the initial round of renovations that I think dates back to the early '90s. So Lake Shore still has not been renovated. Cicero is, I think, the first one in that, and they're back up on the list now because a lot of what happened at Cicero, well, a lot good happened at Cicero, but a lot of the existing systems were not replaced and remain there. And so now you see that at a lot of the buildings actually is, and it's not uncommon, but you see sort of different vintages of the building and the equipment that sort of came with that. And so portions of the buildings are in great need. A thing that really came to light is particularly at CNS, the mechanical system and the piping systems are really at a critical level. And so this is something that your maintenance staff is dealing with on a daily basis. There are, I think I heard that there was just another pipe failure recently that flooded a portion of the building. There was another day where some equipment was not working, and there was almost the need to cancel in-school classes that day. So again, those are the most critical. There's support buildings that are in poor condition, both physically and in a lot of cases aren't really supporting the maintenance staff and the bus maintenance staff that need to work in those buildings just due to their age and the layout. Again, I've talked about roofs and windows, so there are still water leaks in some buildings. You have definitely, with, I think, roofs and probably a paving, there's been some strategies in place for the last couple decades to really hit a lot of these. And I think you've done really well with a lot of the roofing, but there is still more to go. A lot of the buildings have life safety systems that are aging out. So this is fire alarm, PA systems, and somewhat tied to that is also enhancing and extending security measures throughout these buildings. Finally, it's amazing to me, Matt had a list of sort of what the district portfolio involves. And I stole it from him, and it was 11 buildings for administrative and supportive locations, 30-plus academic fields and stadiums. Another piece was 30 acres of sidewalks and 60 acres of pavement, which I have a hard time even grasping. It's a lot to maintain. And so I think, again, a piece of this process will be to, how does the district come up with a steady plan to continue to replace and maintain all these things? And the few, the last random item on there, which is important, is the new Fuel Island was constructed several years ago, and it's time to take the old one offline and to finally deal with that underground storage tank.
Thank you, Paul. Big part of this, as we started uncovering these things, we really are fortunate that we got involved with NYSR. We started looking at these energy audits. They're helping us deal with some of these problems. Our engineers actually built a virtual model of our buildings, and they're able to go in and they're able to break their model to mimic the same results that we get from an energy consumption standpoint to help tell us what might be wrong in the building. So we've identified needs for steam trap repairs. We're using the same tool to help us evaluate lighting upgrades. We're actually taking advantage of some rebate work with National Grid right now on the transportation garage in the MNO building to upgrade the lighting a little bit at a significant discount. We're paying about 30% of the cost or less, and National Grid is picking up the tab for us. So these are all great things, but the real benefit here is going to come in helping us choose where we can benefit most from energy performance contract work. And for those listening that don't know what an energy performance contract is, it's another financial mechanism that allows us to use energy savings to pay the local share, the local burden of a capital project. So this is a great tool for us to consider as we move forward. The work we're doing with these audits is going to help define that in a much greater level of detail than most districts have available. You usually rely on an ESCO, an energy service company, to kind of walk in the door and tell you where you can benefit. We actually are going to have our own firsthand information so that when we negotiate with an ESCO for this type of work, we're one step ahead. So that's going to be important as we move forward. If you go to the next slide, Don. And we also need to address some of the concerns that Paul's bringing to light from our building condition survey a little bit sooner than later. We can't really wait for the planning effort to be completed to start this timeline. It takes a long time to get a project through for approval from the state. So as soon as we complete this work in March and have that data, we're going to need to sit down. We're going to prioritize it. We're going to look at things like health and safety, accessibility and code compliance, failing infrastructure, and very specific current program needs to really build a small project. I say small, I don't know what the subcope of the project is going to be yet. We haven't done the work necessary, but to build that project to meet our immediate needs. An immediate is a loose term. It covers several years potentially. As you can see from the interim timeline that I shared here, this is really the driver behind us getting here today to kick off master planning and to talk about this. If we start now, we're looking at April of 2023 before we can break ground on any kind of work. Okay? And that's a realistic timeline. So that's really where the urgency comes from, to take some of your time today. I know budget season is coming. We wanted to get this in front of you so you had time to consider it. But this is a process that we're going to have to be engaged in as we move through. It needs to go in sync with everything else. We can't just set it aside and forget it until spring. All right. And I'll let Dan wrap up with some closing comments.
So as you can see from the very detailed presentation, we do have a lot of work to do. We need to establish a committee to oversee and guide some of the planning efforts. We really want to make sure that we have a strong community engagement plan to support these efforts. We need to identify focus areas, grade configuration, building capacity. All of those things need to be taken into consideration and our demographics and our financial plan and establish capital and repair and reserves to provide alternative financing tools for the district. We are very large, and we're trying to look holistically at the entire system. We've been focusing on Bear Road right now, which is long overdue. But again, we have a large organization that we don't want to neglect. So with that being said, Matt, that concludes a very comprehensive examination of the district and needs assessment.
We're here for any questions.
I have a question. With the decommissioning of the Fuel Island, wasn't that budgeted for already?
Actually, Mary, we are still using the Fuel Island, that island for some of our fueling. And we are, we're going to do that as part of a separate project. We didn't consider that we needed to have both islands up and running at one time for the transition.
So that wasn't part of the prior project?
Right, correct.
Correct. And there was a recommendation from the district's attorney. It was a legal matter connected to the seeker process.
And then I have a question about the Bear Road project, the loop, the change order for that. Is that going, is that within our budget?
Yes, it falls within our budget. We've got plenty of contingency money available, and we'll be getting a report out to you in the coming days for next week's board meeting for the approval on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions out there? Okay, then I'm going to say thank you, and we will move on to our 2122 budget presentation of Mr. Keegan.
Well, I want to just start by saying Dan told me we had four budget presentations, I'm sorry, four presentations tonight. And he said, Don, I need to finish strong on a real positive, exciting note. So I want you to go forth because everybody gets jacked when they talk about budgets. So here we go. I'm going to take you through a quick budget presentation.
I counted five.
Okay, so that's true. That is true. There really technically was five presentations. So I want to start out and obviously Dan jump in here if need be. But we're at a weird point in the budget process. New York State is anxiously awaiting yet another stimulus package. We're in a very difficult financial situation. So I think the message I want to just leave you with is an overarching message. We're going to share with you what we know, but there's still a fair amount of unknown. And we're still optimistic that we're going to be on track to present an initial budget to the board at the end of February. And these are a few of the elements we've been able to identify and share with you tonight. So we're going to talk about the governor's budget proposal, talk about the preliminary tax cap calculation. We'll update you on fund balance and reserve projections, and then we'll revisit our timeline. So I'm not going to go through all these bullet points, but I want to, the governor's budget was really a, his presentation really focused a lot on the pandemic and the impact of the pandemic. And his budget proposal takes about $4.3 billion in federal funds and allocates it to schools and ongoing operational and pandemic-related costs. One of the pieces of good news that came out of this, and I don't know whether this was on the board's radar. I believe we shared this with you at some point, but last year, we operated our fleet. We were delivering food. We were providing, you know, a lot of different services. And the reality of it is the technical ruling by the state is that there's no transportation aid if you're not transporting students. So we'd been sweating it out a little bit as to how this was all going to work out. But the governor came through and said, hey, you're going to get your transportation aid for last year, you know, for the year, last year, when we didn't have students being transported, and we were using our fleet for other things. The other point I wanted to just bring out, once again, you might remember this from last year, but in the governor's budget proposal, you'll see in a moment, he took a whole bunch of expense-driven aids and combined them together. And the strategy there really is to kind of lump these aids together and perhaps not make them expense-driven, make them a little more predictable and manageable, and frankly, potentially reduce them. And that's not good for us. I'll talk more about that in a moment. But let's dive in, and I apologize for the small numbers. I'm going to orient you. This is how we get our governor's aid runs, these aid projections. So the descriptions on the left are the types of aid we receive. The first column is what we call our gen report, our aid projection. So that looks at what we actually expect to receive this year in aid. And so in looking at that, you'll see that, then the second column is the governor's actual proposal, and the third is the difference. But let's look at foundation aid. The governor is proposing no increase in foundation aid. Our next area is excess cost aid, and that's our special aid. That's our aid on special education services, and they're projecting that to be basically flat. And then the next category is are these aids that got lumped into what the governor is now calling services aid. It takes into consideration hardware and technology, software and library and textbook, transportation and BOSI's aids. It just lumps it into one big number. We're anticipating an increase in that aid. The total aid without building aid is going to go up about $1.3 million. Building aids projected here to be down. I'm going to talk about that in a minute. We actually expect that it'll be higher than this as all of the aid for the various projects that we had working on kick in. But then you can see, and this is probably the biggest takeaway, there's a huge plug here. The governor is anticipating that we'll get additional pandemic aid, federal, you know, aid from the federal government to the tune of about $7.8 million. And that's going to cover the pandemic adjustment, the $7.8 million that New York is, you know, the governor is basically saying New York can't afford to pay. So just like they did last year. So just like they did last year, they're going to take the gap that they have, and they're going to offset it with federal aid. And there's, you know, some fingers crossed there as to whether that aid comes through or not. But if the aid comes through, we're looking at about a half a million dollar increase over what we received. We're projected to receive for this year, very nominal, very nominal increase. I also want to point out a couple of things I want to just talk about here. So again, foundation aid continues to be an issue. Governor's proposal doesn't increase, show an increase. We desperately need an increase in that, our largest aid category. The governor's consolidated these expenses, these, you know, certain expenses into services aid. And and we're worried it's going to reduce our overall aid over time. And let me, let me tell you what that that means for us. So we right now, when we have to add a new run on to our transportation system to cover a special needs child or McKinney Vento, a homeless child. Whenever we do those things, we say, well, you know, we got to do that. We have to make sure we service our kids and and get them to school. But we rest assured knowing that in the following year, we're going to get our transportation aid rate on that item. Well, if the governor locks that in, that would mean that that we would not get additional aid for providing additional services. And that's problematic. Back to my comment on on building aid. We anticipate that we're going to get a little more aid than the governor is showing due to the the work that we've done on Bear Road, due to the roof projects we've recently committed, completed, and the aid kicking in for our Fuel Island. Another, another point, you guys know, we've been so stressed out this year, worried about, are we going to receive our full 2021 state aid, the aid for this year? We were told that there's a possibility we wouldn't get as much as 20% of it. The governor intonated in his speech that we're going to, we're still going to lose as much as 5% of that aid. That's over 3 million, three and a half million dollars of our of our aid if we don't get that 5%. However, in reading some communication from the the Office of Budget for New York State, they're indicating we might get all of our aid for 2021. So we're planning right now on not getting, getting 5% of our aid. And we're operating on that basis until it's absolutely confirmed in the final budget that we're going to get more. And we hope, we obviously are hoping for more. The the total projected aid over what we had planned on for this year. Remember, the the governor's budget is, his proposal is compared to what we expect to get this year. What we expect to get is a little different than what we planned on due to those expense driven aids. So we're looking at maybe a 1.1% increase in overall aid. And I'm here to tell you with with the, with our increased personnel costs, benefits and salaries, with the increased energy costs, with the increased costs associated with operating in this COVID environment, which by the way, we anticipate in next year's budget, and you'll see this, that there's going to be some costs that we're going to incur into the future that started here with COVID, but will continue for health and safety reasons. So, you know, we're hoping that the legislature is able to do the things it needs to do to get us additional aid for for the 2122 school year. Before I move on, I'm going to talk about the tax cap. But before I do that, are there questions that you have about the governor's budget proposal that I can answer? If not, let me, let me give you our initial tax cap calculation. So this is the standard format that we look at every year. The first line is the tax levy, the amount of money that we levied on the local taxpayers, $92.5 million. This year, our tax base growth factor is 1.0093. And and to refresh everybody's memory, what that means is that, believe it or not, our tax base here in North Syracuse School District, our three towns grew. And as a result of it growing, the tax cap allows us to increase our levy to support a larger district. Even though our enrollment is declining, we have more houses, more apartments, more roads to cover. And therefore, we're allowed to increase our tax levy slightly to cover that tax base growth factor. This is a early estimate of our of our pilot revenue that I've included in here. The pilot revenue for 1920 was $379,000. And you'll see if you go down a few lines further for 20, listed for 2021, we're estimating that our pilot revenue is going to be about $379,000. Again, I'll get, I have our attorneys working on an update of that information. The the tax levy for capital was $2,393,000. What that number represents is the local share of capital projects. That's the amount of money that our our taxpayers agreed to include in their, in their tax, in in their taxes around projects that they approved, such as the Fuel Island and the Bear Road project and the Route Projects. You'll notice that that number is going up to about $3,170,000. So there's an increase in that local share around projects that were approved. When I add all that together and I include the inflation factor of of 1.23%, that's the inflation rate, 1.23%, that gets us to a total levy of $95,321,000 or an increase of about 2.98% or and a dollar increase of $2.7 million. So if our levy goes up $2.7 million or 2.98%, that'd be about a $70 increase on a $100,000 home. Any questions on the tax levy? And again, it's a preliminary, preliminary estimate. Let's look at our fund balance. So so the this top half is what I showed you recently. And it basically takes us through our fund balance through June. What we're assuming is that we're not going to get all of our aid for the 2021 school year to the tune of about $3.5 million. So we're reducing our fund balance by that amount. As the board knows, we put an expenditure or budget freeze in place recently, and we expect to yield about $875,000 worth of savings from that freeze. That'll lower our fund balance. The, when you consider the not getting all of our taxes and you consider the the savings associated with the budget freeze to about $7.1 million. If we increase our budget, this is just an estimate, by about 3%, our budget will go to about $177 million. And we will end the year, the, at June 30th, 2021, with a fund balance that's about 4% of our tax, of our our total budget, which is, which is a good place to be in. It's one of the reasons, I want to remind everybody, it's one of the reasons that we allowed our fund balance to grow at the end of June of of 2020 in anticipation of a challenging year ahead of us due to COVID. Reserves, you'll notice on this chart that the number for June 30th, 2020, and the number for June 30th, 2021 are the same number. That's because we're not really anticipating any change in reserve activity. Sure, there'll be some small interest income that'll accrue to these, to these reserves, but it'll be a nominal dollar amount. And the reason we're not anticipating this at this time is that we really need to see what the the final aid package is for for North Syracuse next year. And we can talk about whether we'll use these reserves at that time. But right now, we're assuming that we're going to get sufficient aid to cover our needs for next year. And and we're planning at this stage of the game and not touching our reserves. So that takes us through today's meeting, the January 25th meeting. Again, we fully anticipate on February 22nd to have an initial budget together for the board to review. Our principals and our directors are all working on preparing their budgets as we speak. We're the, we're speaking with our legislators. As everybody knows, we had a legislative committee recently. And and we will be working with them to lobby for greater state aid when the, when the state budget is finalized. And and that will be somewhat dependent on the next stimulus package from Washington. So we'll get that initial budget to you on February 22nd, and we'll work through March with the board. And with it, with an effort to hopefully have the board approve our budget in early April and heading toward a budget hearing in May and a budget vote on May 18th. And that's our quick update with this very preliminary information. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Don?
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just have a question. Do we have any debt that will be coming off the books?
Sure. Yeah, you know, I'm glad you, I'm glad you mentioned that. That's figured into this tax levy for capital number in our tax, in our tax cap. So what we we look at, we work with fiscal advisors. And and what we try to time and as we look at project work, when debt's dropping off, that's when we we add on the new project debt. And that, and that allows us to, you know, not have a huge spike. You you see an increase here, but given the sheer volume of work we're doing, particularly in Bear Road, the increase is not as much as you might think. And that's due to the fact that debt has in fact fallen off, will be falling off.
Thank you.
Don, I just just want something clarified. On that page, I know NISBA was working on legislation trying to have the pilots calculate into tax cap. Something to that effect. I see it subtracted. I mean, that's doesn't look like it's a, what kind of impact is that for us?
Well, so think about what a pilot does, and this is, this is just so darn confusing, but think about what a pilot does. The, when a pilot is entered into, it's a payment in lieu of tax agreement. And so that property doesn't pay traditional property taxes. So it, we don't get a tax levy on that, but we get a pilot payment. And so what pilot payments do is when a pilot payment is added, that can be good for your tax, for your tax cap, and it can be bad. But once the pilot is done, that comes off. So you're only impacted by the change in pilots. That's why we, we add it on one end, subtract it on the other. You know, and our big issue with pilots as a school district is that, you know, we so rarely, although we have our attorneys represent us, you know, we're not in the economic development business. So towns and and counties, they get involved in those discussions and they kind of negotiate away our tax levies to give businesses incentives to come here. And and sometimes it works out good and other times it doesn't.
So just simple math as as we go forward, and as you said in the beginning, there's so much unknown.
Yep.
1% of the tax levy is, looks slightly north of $900,000.
Exactly.
920, okay.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's, that's the number. And and we'll, we'll find out, we'll find out more information about our pilot agreements, and we'll find out more information about that local share, that tax levy on capital, that 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 one component here in the next couple of weeks. The tax levy growth factor and and the inflation number, the allowable increase, those are locked in stone at this point. So I think we are looking at about a two, you know, just shy of 3% tax levy increase at this point.
Thank you. Other questions out there?
Thank, thank you very much, folks.
Okay. We're going to move to Board of Education Committee reports. We have some policies on the agenda today, so I'm going to start with Ms. Scanlon, if she'd like to report to us. Thank you.
Sure. We had our first policy committee meeting in a while. We had a little break because we canceled the December meetings. We're all up to date. So we met last week, January 19th, and everyone was ready to get back to work. We had eight policies that we reviewed, and all eight are on tonight's agenda. Three, we're recommending readoption without change. And five, we are recommending changes, so amend and re-adopt. And Connie Gibson does something great for us, and she puts a policy note that's in the board docs that shows what exactly the changes were that we recommend. So if you want to see what that is, you can just look at the policy note that she has included. Our next policy meeting is February 23rd.
Hey, thank you very much. Mr. Crabtree, report for legislative.
Thank you, Mr. President. Don spoke tonight, and basically a lot that he's talked about, we got to speak about, about the fund balance and so forth. So I won't go into that, but the positive things that I see from our committee, we met on inauguration day, that that was very positive, January 20th, is the student feedback. I I'm just impressed, and I know Mary is 200 policy committee. I'm just impressed with the students and how they speak. We've been fortunate at our legislative meetings this year to get our actual representatives there. Mr. Sterpi was there, Pam Hunter was there, even though she just has a little part of our district, she's very concerned. And we had an aide from John Mania. So I'm impressed with that, but they're impressed with the students that are on the committee. We have three seniors, you know, that are on the committee. And I had their names here because I want to make sure. But Riley and I never got to know Owen Greco. I think he's on our superintendent's superintendent's committee, but they add a lot. And one of the questions that came up that Al Sterpi wanted to know, that he's getting a lot of feedback on sports, why we don't have sports. And each of the students spoke about it, and they were very honest about it. And then you can see that there's going to be a change. Like three days later, we got something from the governor that there will be a change. We don't know how it's going to go. They're going to have to work it out on winter sports. But these men and women, young men and women, all believe that we should have sports, and they were really honest about it. Another, you know, graduates that are on my committee, Justin Perkins is an aide for Mr. Sterpi, and he's now in Albany. He always joins the meetings, and he adds a lot. Another young man, Xavier Moody, who ran for the school board last year, is on the committee. And he adds a lot as a former graduate. We're lucky to have these students that come back and give back to our school district. I'm just, I'm just impressed with that. So that's, that's about it. We're going to meet the day after Mary is. We're going to meet February 24th. And I think Don will have a lot more to to bring to the table. But every, it's a great committee, and I, I, I thank you for letting me be the facilitator. Remind my board members that this Saturday, 9:00 to 10:30 by Zoom, please let Connie know so she can send your name in where we get to hear Mr. Tim's. And we hear a little bit more about the, you know, what Governor Cuomo is giving and, and, you know, and he brought up something again tonight about BOSI's aid, transportation's aid. The governor, Governor Cuomo is trying to put it into what is called service aid, and that will hurt us. So I know that's one of the things we'll talk about. So please let Connie know because you have to register. I know, Paul, you're registered to go, and I am, and I don't know who else is registered, but please let Connie know that. The other thing is, I was going to talk about it later, but getting our onboard stuff today. The Board of Regents is meeting February 8th and February 9th. They're looking at testing. They're looking to say, you know what, we really can't give the tests for grades three through A, and we need to look at the regions. And our state ed department sent a letter to President Biden's education people saying, could we please have a waiver on that? So we need to watch, you know, and I'm sure Dan knows a little bit about this, that we want to look at the testing. And hopefully, they might give us a waiver that we don't have to do it. So that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Did you want to say anything on your BOSI's report?
Well, I knew it was going to be a long meeting, so basically, I don't have, you know, if people look at my report and they have any questions, don't contact me, all right? Yeah, I did take, I asked to take a tour every year of of the BOSI's programs. And Paul, you went last year and so did Michael Marizio. So I went over to Crown Road and there's a lot of our students. They're going five days a week. Thanks to Matt, our transportation. They're all being transported every day to school. Thank you so much for doing that. And these are the kind of kids that have to be in school five days a week. But what I wanted to see mainly was the three programs that we have in our schools where BOSI, BOSI's rents a classroom. We actually get some finances from that because we can't put all the classes in BOSI's. Was not able to go to the high school. But we started out as the junior high and Mr. Bowles joined us. And I was just impressed with the class, the teaching assistants. I didn't get a chance to see Mrs. Terrose, Ms. Terrose, but she just sent me, I just saw, she sent me an email and said, the program's added to their school. She enjoys the teachers, she enjoys the, the students and they add to the junior high. I was glad to hear that. And then we went down 11 and traveled to Roxspur Road Elementary. This program was at Smith Road last year because of the change of the in, in-al children. Matt Matola opened up a former kindergarten room. This room was dynamic. And what I noticed in both rooms and then also at Crown Road, almost every classroom was on virtual. And I got to talk to the kids, you know, I didn't know how it worked. And I was very impressed with the teaching, teachers and teaching assistants that are teaching their kids, you know, they've got kids around the room, but they're also doing a virtual lesson. I, I, I just, I'm so glad I went today because it really, um, it really was outstanding. And then I ended up in Salve Elementary where the deaf and hearing program is. And that's, that's just, um, you know, an amazing program. So I'll talk, you want to talk about it. But yeah, I was just really happy to see. And it was a Monday morning and I remember being a teacher and Monday morning was, and I know Rosemary would tell you, you know, the kids are kind of, oh, they were all engaged. Every kid was engaged, doing math, doing reading, doing letters. And at home, you know, I got to, to, to hear a deaf and hearing kid talk, you know, they talk a very, and I can't do sign language, but he was sharing his, you know, sharing and the mother was there. So I thank North Syracuse for all that you do for BOSI's because it's an amazing program. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Bowles.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank the members of the North Syracuse Education Foundation. They have built up to about 60 desks for students that had, are in need. And it's really been a benefit for students to have that, that special place in their home so they can do the learning while they are at home. So I want to thank Jackie Forte and her committee for all that they've done. I do want to share that I received a phone call Sunday night from Mr. Pete Moore. You may know Mr. Moore, but he shared with me that on Sunday nights, he has set up with CNS graduates motivational Zoom meetings for different athletic teams, for graduates who have gone on to do bigger and better things. He mentioned Tyvon Branch, who has played in the NFL. He mentioned just a number of people that have been willing to give their time to talk to kids and to not just talk about the successes that they've had, but just about life in general and how to persevere and move forward. We wanted to do that during this pandemic. So I want to credit Pete Moore for that. And if there are people that want to try to tune into any of these, just, just contact Pete. He doesn't want to put any link just out there, but he'd be one to connect with if you do have a child that is interested in a certain activity and needs a motivation. I do want to comment on the governor's statement on Friday. That was a shock to many of us and we'll be hearing more. I'll be meeting with superintendents on Wednesday at 8:00 to have more discussion. I know some of the athletic directors met today and had some discussion as far as next steps. So I will be filling the board in as we move along because things are moving at breakneck speed. The other thing I want to share is, um, Mr. Krilla, and I think Phil also had a hand in it. Pamela Hunter paid a visit to the, the Salina or Matty Dale area. And we showed her some of the schools that we have in the area because as we're meeting with legislative committee and lobbying our people, our assemblywomen, we want them to know what, what our building is like, what the area is like. And she has a portion of Salina. So I, I do want to thank John for setting that up. And we were able to give Mrs. Hunter a firsthand account of some buildings in our district. The last thing I have is that on February 3rd, we're looking to have Ms. Pat Brew. And she is a well-known person in New York State about crisis response. And she will be able to give us a training for our administrators and some of our staff who might be on the crisis team during that half day on February 3rd. And I think that's all I have for right now. And we are trying to make sure we're connecting with parents when they have concerns and trying to provide them with feedback. So there's more to come with some of the questions that they're having. People are looking, as things are opening up in vaccines, what more can we do to get students coming into school more?
Okay, thank you. Under board comments, I just, I wanted to start off with one that anybody else may follow. But I just wanted to let the board know that I've had discussions with Vice President Marizio, Superintendent Bowles and District Clerk Ms. Gibson on trying to work, work out a way to bring public participation back to the board meeting. So I thought it'd be best if Connie could give us a little update on where she stands with that or what it looks like going forward. Thank you.
Yep. I wanted to let you know that I've done a little investigation. And I believe if we run our meetings through Zoom webinar, that would give us the flexibility to allow comments from the audience and people that want to speak. So the problem is, is we don't have a license for that yet. So where we are right now is Amy Keesey at BOSI's is looking into getting us that license so that we can start holding those meetings through quote unquote, a webinar versus having them through a Zoom meeting. So as soon as I get more information on that, I'll give you another update.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted the board to be aware of that discussion. And I wonder if there are any thoughts from other board members on that or, or not? Because we'll go forward with that and we'll update you on that if not. Okay, other board comments out there?
Yes. And I apologize to Connie not sending this. But last night, I don't usually listen to Spectrum. But when I first turned my TV, it comes on. And DJ, one of Mr. Bowles is on his superintendent's. That project that he did was highlighted on Spectrum and they did a, it's two to three minutes. DJ is the student, I know all of you know, there was a Bear Road student, a second grade. And he noticed, um, you know, homeless people don't have warmth. And he started a blanket drive. He started it 11 years ago and he's still doing it as a senior. And he has collected thousands and thousands and thousands of blankets for the rescue mission. To me, I mean, a lot of students do one project or they do, um, a couple of years. 11 years from second grade to being a senior. I mean, Dan, you should be very proud of this dude. We all should be proud, but he's on his committee. I think he's assistant president or something, a commitman or whatever on his, on his thing. But Connie, I don't know how we'll get it to you. So, because usually forward that's information, but it was on Spectrum and it was on Sunday night. That young man, he's got a web, he's got a Facebook page that if you want to give a blanket, you could, you know, he'll pick it up or you can drop it off somewhere. Just outstanding.
I'll look for that on Spectrum, Bob, and send it to everyone.
Yeah, it's a really great story, excellent story.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move into routine action items. And I'll look for a motion, please, to accept the minutes of the meeting of January 4th, 2001. Motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion on the meeting minutes that are before us? Seeing none, all in favor, hands posed. That is carried. If I get a motion to put B, C, and D together, a motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon. And these are the consideration of classification and placement of disabled students in school, in preschool and for home instruction. That's before us now, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that item is, items are carried. Thank you very much. Motion for E, please, acknowledgment of business office reports for December 2020. A motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. We have discussion action items now. A is a resolution to approve teacher lead evaluator. We have an addition. Motion, please, for that. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. If I could have a motion, I'd like to place B and C together. They are the non-resident tuition rates, the final for 1920 and the estimated for 2021. A motion, please. Motion, Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Harrington. Any discussion on the non-resident tuition rates? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. Those two items are carried. If I could please have a motion to put D before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Harrington. These are to create positions to do some switching. I'm going to ask for an explanation because I read it and it was a little bit. If either Dan or Jason want to just summarize that for us, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I can take that one for you. So back in the summertime, we had reduced enrollment at Main Street. So we ended up cutting one afternoon section. And now we've had enough people coming in the community back and getting on a waitlist that we could reopen the afternoon session again. So what we basically need to do is add a .5 special ed teacher. And we took two full-time teaching assistants that were there for morning and afternoon and reduced them to morning only because we needed two bodies, but only in the morning. So we had 2.5s in that room. So to bring both of those .5s up to 2.0s, we need to add a .5 and a .5. So the overall net increase to our budget is a 1.0 teaching assistant, but it's really 2.5s to make those two folks whole again.
Thank you. That makes sense now to me. Okay, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Item E, a motion, please, for the resolution to increase substitute security guard pay. Motion from, from Ms. Scanlon, second from Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Motion, please, for acknowledgment of gifts. Item F, motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that item is carried and motion for G, surplus of non-marketable goods. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion on our marketable surplus? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, those motions, that motion is carried. And I'd like a motion of, I, I would ask Ms. Scanlon to make the motion to place policies H, I, J, K, and L before us. Ms. Scanlon, a second, please. Mr. Thorne, any discussion on that? Ms. Scanlon did talk to us about that during the comment period on the board committees. Okay, great. Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. Thank you again, Mary, for your work on that committee. And retirements, this is an information one. This is a big one. It's that time of year where we have the deadline coming up. So I'm going to read through these. We have Heidi Davidson, teaching assistant retiring with 20 years of service. Michelle DeGennaro, elementary teacher retires with 30 years of service. Susan Kaiser, elementary teacher retiring with 28 years of service. Joanne Kohler, elementary teacher retiring with 23 years of service. Lisa McVeigh, speech therapist, retires with 32 years of service. Walt Mueller, elementary teacher retires with 22.5 years of service. Diane Packard, teaching assistant retiring with 20 years of service. Kayla Duke, bus driver retires with 20 years of service. Kenneth LaDuke, bus driver retires with 19.7 years of service. Susan Siney, school nurse, retires with 15 years of service. That is quite a list. I happen to know some of them on there and I just want to thank them all for their service. Wish them a lot of luck. It's a big step and it's sometimes a little difficult to get used to, but I wish you all the best and thank you for your service. Instructional personnel report A, under personnel reports. If I get a motion for A, motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion on personnel report A? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. And instructional support staff, I'm sorry, support staff personnel report B. A motion to put that before us, please. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving, I'm sorry, of reviewing the employment record of one individual and to receive an update on negotiations with a district bargaining unit with no action to follow. Motion, I put that motion out. Can I get a second? Second from Mr. Herman, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. That is carried. Just a motion for German, Ben, if I could have somebody make that. A motion for a German, motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? The only discussion I'll say is I will, we'll, we'll sign off and I will see you all on the other link shortly. Can I get a second? Did I already, oh, I already had a second. I'm sorry, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Thank you very much.